We have a timer and we have a quorum, so I'm going to ask the clerk to please call, I'm gonna call this meeting of the Lansing City Council to order at 7 o'clock and ask that the clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Betts.
Here.
Councilmember Dunbar. Councilmember Dunbar. Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Present.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
There are seven members present at forum, councilmember Dunbar is absent.
All right, we'll keep an eye out for her, she was at committee of the whole, so we'll see what happens there. So the next item on our agenda is our meditation and pledge of allegiance. Let me just get the mayor in here real quick and then we will, I'll open up to councilmembers, is there anyone, councilmembers or Mr. Clerk, that you'd like us to keep in our thoughts during our moment of meditation? All right, Mr. Mayor, is there anybody, Councilmember Spitzley, yes?
I'm sorry, I was trying to raise my hand, nevermind. And I know that probably everybody else is thinking about it, but I did want to just kind of, you know, let us pray for John Lewis and let us pray, you know, for his family and let us pray for the nation, goodness gracious. I mean, he's a, you know, pray, he was a great man and we are a country in crisis right now. You know, he said that on March 7th in 1965, you know, he loved America so much on that day in crossing the Edmund Pettus Bridge that he was willing to die for us and for that nation. I mean, and what a wonderful thing. And we need to remember that, we need to remember, you know, his sacrifice for our country and to try to put forth, you know, a nation that's free for all. And so I, we want to just remember him and remember his family, we want to pray for him and we want to pray for the country because we've lost a great one and it's a sad time.
Thank you, Councilmember Spitzley, I'd also like to add Dr. Eva Evans and her family to the, to our list of folks to keep in our thoughts. As you know, longtime activist, community member, the just terrible loss for our community in her passing at 85, so thank you for that. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I was gonna mention Dr. Evans, Congressman Lewis, Minister, author and organizer, C.T. Vivian, who passed on the same day as Congressman Lewis. I'd also like to add Julio Benaro.
Yes.
Mayor Benaro's father, who passed a few days ago. I hope we can keep all of those in our thoughts and prayers.
Thank you. We will, seeing no other hands, I will please join me in a moment of meditation. Thank you. Now for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We do not have printed proceedings this evening. We did, we lost our clerk, there he is. So we will move on to consideration of late items and I recognize councilmember, our Vice President Hussein.
Sure, I would move for the suspensible council rule number nine. If you look in, or I'm sorry, if you look on your agenda for resolutions for action under Committee of the Whole, there was a resolution for disposition of city property related to transfer of property administered, sorry, by the Lansing Housing Commission to the Lansing Housing Commission from the city of Lansing. It was brought to our attention by the city attorney's office that we in fact have to have a public hearing before we actually consider and vote on that resolution. And so a resolution was emailed to all city councilmembers earlier today to set that public hearing and I believe the date is August 31st at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, we do have a motion in front of us to suspend council rule number nine to consider a late item. We were, this is belts and suspenders for us, we just wanted to make sure that that we had covered our bases because of the resolution, didn't actually have the public hearing. So with that, I will entertain a motion to do that, council, with the clerk, please call the roll.
On the addition of late item, councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar. Councilmember Garza. Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
A A zero N A's, the motion is adopted.
Motion carries, thank you very much. Mr. Clerk.
Okay, we are to comments by councilmembers and the city clerk.
Do any councilmembers wish to make comment at this time? Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have a couple of comments. The first one is, over the weekend, on Saturday, Mikey 23 Foundation had a walk against violence and because of COVID, it was a virtual walk. In the past, it's been a great event and lots of people have participated in. And so there was a virtual walk and folks were able to provide, you know, 10 to 12 second videos on, you know, what they're doing to make their community a better place. And I was honored to participate and be able to submit a video and I was joined by my councilmen, Jackson and Hussein, who also submitted a video and the mayor did as well. And so I didn't know if you were gonna talk about it, mayor, so I didn't want to steal your thunder, but it was, you know, again, you know, in commemoration of Mr. McKissick's family and the loss of their son. It's a wonderful foundation and they're doing great things in our community and I did want to mention that. The other thing I wanted to mention is when I was talking about Congressman Lewis, the thought occurred to me that, you know, their student nonviolent coordinating committee paved a way for the current Black Lives Matter movement. And so as we, you know, we look across our country and we see demonstrations, you know, Congressman Lewis was talking about how, you know, good trouble, making good trouble and to keep pushing and to keep pushing. And that's how I look at the current movement. Finally, my son Jordan got married a couple of weeks and I am on grandma watch. I shall be a grandma any moment next week. So if you hear, you know, a thunder cloud or see a mushroom cloud in the air, that will be Jackson being born, my first grandchild. Thank you.
Thank you and congratulations to your family. Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Council President, congratulations, Patricia. So I just wanted to give a heads up, there's gonna be COVID-19 testing available this Wednesday, June 29th at Crystal Ray Church, that's 201 West Miller Road, Lansing, Michigan, it's from 11 to 3:00 PM. And if you do plan on attending, you can walk up or drive in, must have a mask, mask is required. The test consists of swab in the nose and if you're interested, phone number is 517-887-4517. And also this Thursday, July 30th, they'll be testing at the Crystal Ray Community Center on 1717 North High Street from 12 to 4:00 PM as well. And last but not least, and I'm sure someone else is gonna mention this, but the application deadline to become part of the Citizens Academy is this Friday, July 31st. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Garza, I can attest to the ease of testing for COVID-19, it's not my most favorite experience, but it was relatively painless and super quick. So I would encourage all of you that are able to go out and get that test done. Councilmember Jackson. No? Yes?
Yeah, thank you, I had a different view on, so it's not the same unmute spot. So I just also wanted to highlight a few things that came up already. One is that the Mikey 23 Foundation, Councilwoman Spitzley made some great points and said they're doing great work, but I also want to point out what they're doing. They are basically taking properties that are distressed or, you know, red tagged and they're turning them around using young people in the community who are at risk, teaching them a trade that they learn and they learn it well and turning that home that was distressed into a beautiful property that can go for sale, can go to the foundation, can do a lot of different things with it. And so I want to highlight that on the same back as the public hearing that's set for August 31st. And basically, you know, I guess there's 200 and something scattered properties around the city of Lansing that are currently Lansing Housing ran and operated, but you know, city and Lansing Housing owned. So my thing is, what we're gonna do, I guess, is if nothing changes, you know, deed over all the property per usual. But my thought would be like, what if we gave one or two to Mikey 23 or some other idea? If that can be explored. So there's a public hearing and the only way that anything happens is if people have their input or have ideas. And I just want to throw it out there and make people aware of it because as we go through now with, you know, what can we do to help, what can the city do to help, what can anybody do to help? And people talk about housing as one of those areas, well, we have 200 and something properties and there's like probably almost as many good places and public service places to put them into. So just a thought and thank you.
Thank you very much. I think that concludes councilmember comments, so I will turn it over to the clerk, who's gonna take over.
Thank you, President Spatafor, and of course, this being one week and one day before the city or before the state primary election, I do want to remind folks to please vote. We are still issuing absentee ballots, we've issued about 22,000 ballots. We still have a lot of people who have a ballot that have not returned it, so if you have one of those, please get it back to us. The polling place, polling places will be open on election day. We are encouraging everyone to wear a mask and observe social distancing if you do come in person to vote on election day. Got a lot of measures in place to try and keep both the public, the voting public as well as our election workers safe on that day. But one location I do want to mention is that Atwood School and all the all the voters who vote there did get a notice, but Atwood School is closed for construction and those voters will be voting at the Alfreda Schmidt South Side Community Center. But other than that, you would go to your normal polling place if you wish to vote on election day. And under the new proposal three rules, you can still, if you're not registered, there is still time to register up through election day. That has to be done at this point in person in my office at 2500 South Washington or in City Hall. And the hours of those offices for the rest of this week, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. The South Washington location is open until 7 o'clock on Wednesday night as well as 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM, both Saturday and Sunday. And then next week, both of the locations will close at 4:00 PM on Monday for absentee voting, that's the last day to vote. Absentee, that's the time deadline on that day, but then both will be open for same day registration and voting on Tuesday election day. So I encourage everyone to participate. And with that, we are to
Mr. Clerk, before we move on, I think I might have missed councilmember Hussein, but I saw his hand up, but it went down. So I just want to make sure that you didn't have any comments, Mr. Vice President.
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, yep, thank you. All right, sorry, go ahead.
That's fine. We are to community event announcements, if anyone in the audience says a community event, we'll give you one minute to give us the details and I see we have raised hands. So Loretta Stanaway will give you one minute to tell us the details of your events.
We are holding the Friends of Lansing's Historic Cemeteries is hosting its third annual Service of Remembrance on Sunday, August 23rd at Mount Hope Cemetery in the Fratcher Memorial Garden. This is a service for all those who've lost loved ones in the last calendar year who are buried in the three city cemeteries or interred in those three city cemeteries. We will be doing this with social distancing and masks required. So again, that's 3 o'clock on Sunday, August 23rd.
Okay, thank you, it looks like Emily Rice also has an announcement. Emily?
Hi there, thank you. I'm on the board for the Women's Center of Greater Lansing and some of you might be aware that every year they host the Capital City Dragon Boat Race, it's one of their biggest fundraisers of the year. And of course, we can't host that in-person event this year. So we are going virtual, it's September 17th through the 20th. Those are the tentative dates, but lock that in for your calendar. And so you can get virtual teams from all over and raise money and there'll be like activities that you can do over the course of the weekend. So because it's our biggest fundraiser, we're really hoping for even bigger community support for this event. So please spread the word and check out the information at women'scenterofgreaterlansing.org or on their Facebook page. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so it looks like that's the end of our community event announcements. So now we will open speaker registration for public comment on legislative matters. So if you want to talk under legislative matters, which includes all of the items listed under the consent agenda and resolutions for action and the ordinance for passage. I would note, it's my understanding, we will not be, the council will not be voting on the reappointment of John Crone is still in committee as well as the social districts, but those are listed on the agenda, so the public is still able to discuss those under public comment on legislative matters if you wish. And with that, as people are raising their hands, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mr. Mayor, sorry, go ahead.
All right, thank you. A few things, several of them were said, so I won't repeat. You have two letters in front of you, we have applied for two grants, one for hazard pay for our first responders. These are dollars made available by the federal government to the state and the state is now passing them on. So you should have that as a notification. Same with, we've applied for the CARES dollars for the city. So we're providing notification and we'll wait to hear back from the state on both of those. We're also, we've been alerted, which I'm sure you all know, that our August revenue sharing payment is going to be replaced with CARES dollars, but it's supposed to be one and a half times the payment, so we're gonna see what we get with that and hopefully bring to you a resolution with additional dollars from the state, which would be nice. The LEAP has announced, LEAP Regional has announced that they have grants for many of our small businesses. If you have a small business between 10 and 50 employees, you are eligible for a $20,000 grant. If you have between one and nine employees or you are a nonprofit, you're eligible for a $10,000 grant. There are, I think 30% of all the grants have to go to women, people of color and veteran owned businesses. We certainly want to see as many Lansing businesses apply for this as possible, so I hope councilmembers will share that with your networks. We are pushing it out to all of the business associations and quarter improvement authorities and a variety of other avenues to LEAP, but I hope everybody will, will share that. Wanted to let folks know that we're seeking an artist, we got a grant to do an art piece at Rutter Park. We finished the playground equipment, which is exciting, we're continuing to provide social services there and now we're gonna have an art piece which we received a grant for. So if anyone knows an artist, the RFP was just extended today, so I hope people will push that out to a to an artist to do a cool art piece at Rutter Park. I think Councilman Garza mentioned the Citizens Academy, which closes July 31st, hope people will apply. Wanted to offer my congratulations to the mayor of East Lansing, Aaron Stevens, who has been thrown into the job and already been on a few calls with him and he's doing a great job. So congratulations to Mayor Stevens in East Lansing. And finally, I want to thank everybody who participated in the racial justice town hall that we had last week. Lori Adams-Simon did a wonderful job facilitating, Chief Green did a great job answering questions. We had a wonderful variety of people throughout the community who commented on a variety of issues. So I want to thank Teresa Bingman and Kim Coleman, who helped to set it up, Christopher Mombi, who did IT, and again, Chief Darryl Green, who was fantastic. So thank you to the Lansing community for participating and weighing in. The surveys are online, if anybody wants to fill out the survey on our website, so we'll continue to take that comment through September and we'll have a few more of those coming up. So that's a lot in a little time, Mr. President, and that's what I've got.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. On the note, I guess, Mr. Clerk, if I can go back real quick, I guess I can do whatever I want, really, because I'm
Your meeting.
It's my meeting, but I forgot to announce that we did have a listening schedule, listening session scheduled for August 3rd at 6:00 PM. We had a number of concerns raised in terms of the in-person nature of it and trying to move forward with a facilitator. So in conversation and Councilmember Spitzley, I know you wanted to announce this, so I'll, it was a joint discussion that we had. We're going to have the first meeting of the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee be on the 6th, August 3rd at 6:00 PM to substitute for that listening session with an organizational meeting for about 10 minutes and then open, open mic to community members who want us to, want to talk about racial justice, equality, what they think the work of that committee should be directed toward. So that'll allow us to have a good dialogue still, we'll do it virtually. Feedback from many of our community members has been that it's more inclusive and easier to get ahold of us via Zoom. So to mitigate all the health risks, we're gonna do it over Zoom. So I do apologize that that had to be delayed, but we didn't want to push the timing anymore, so we're gonna use the committee that was created by this body to serve that purpose. On August 3rd at 6:00 PM, there is no advanced registration required. Please just, we'll have it posted on our website, post on the council website. I'll ask that maybe some of the other social media folks or the other councilmembers can share it on social media channels, so it gets out through the appropriate networks. But it's something that we didn't want to delay anymore, but just, I couldn't overcome the health and safety risks involved with an in-person activity. So we've moved to that forum, that venue. So thank you, Mr. Clerk, for the indulgence.
Thank you. So we are to public comment on legislative matters and as I said, that includes the items on the consent agenda resolutions and ordinance for adoption as well as the following public hearing, number one, in consideration of the ordinance to modify membership of the employees retirement system, Board of Trustees.
Yes, I'm sorry, you know what, Mr. Clerk, I will speak on that one. So there is a ordinance to modify the membership of the employees retirement system, Board of Trustees, to include a member as a citizen of the city of Lansing, a resident of the city of Lansing. Currently, the ordinance has a resident on the panel, but it is a resident of the state of Michigan. And that, that is filled by Mr. Scott Dedek and he's done by all accounts a good work, a good job on that. But in conversations with the mayor and the board, there was desire to include a Lansing resident on this council, on this board rather. So this resolution would, this ordinance change rather, would add another, another voting member to that body who would be a resident of the city of Lansing. I am these councils designee on the ERS board and we did meet last Wednesday and voted to support this resolution. And there was specifically, councilmember Wood had requested feedback from the ERS board. The more overarching question of where the rest of the ordinance change is, is not, is not ready to be answered yet, councilmember Wood, but we are, the motion was unanimously accepted to support the ERS change and the addition of a new person. Specifically, the question that was asked by ERS board was, were we looking to eliminate a position? And the answer is no, and not right now, obviously, we can't tie a future council to no changes ever again. But it is not the intention, at least that I've been made aware, to eliminate another position. And this ordinance does not do that either. So that is the public hearing on that ordinance.
All right, so we are to public comments and we are gonna cut off raising your hand in about one minute. So if you want to raise your hand, please go ahead and do so. But for now, we have Tobias Webb.
Um, yeah, I would say in general that the city of Lansing needs to put way more effort into employing people from Lansing and putting leadership of people from Lansing forward. Us protesters in the streets all the time are having this problem with the, yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry to interrupt, this is legislative matter, so it has to be something specifically on the legislative agenda. If you're just looking to address the council on city-related business, there's a time period at the end of the meeting for that.
Okay, I'll stop.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
Okay, seeing no other hands, we will move on to the referral of the public hearing, number one, the ERS ordinance amendments.
We'll send that back to the committee of the whole.
All right, then we are to the consent agenda.
Mr. Vice President.
Sure, President Spatafor, the consent agenda today includes seven items, we have pulled item H and we are hoping, I'm sorry, item G, we are hoping that we can get John Crone into a future committee of the whole so that we can vet his appointment. In any event, the consent agenda does include the confirmation of reappointment for Melissa Jeffries as an at-large member of the Board of Review for a term to expire June 30th of 2023, the confirmation of reappointment for James Anderton as a business owner member of the Downtown Lansing Inc. Board for a term to expire June 30th of 2024, the confirmation of reappointment for Karen Nader as a business owner member of the Downtown Lansing Inc. Board for a term to expire June 30th of 2024, confirmation of reappointment of Mark Eagle as the fourth ward and member of the Human Relations and Community Services Board for a term to expire June 30th of 2024, confirmation of reappointment for Matthew Solik as an at-large member of the Board of Zoning Appeals for a term to expire June 30th of 2023, confirmation of reappointment for Jordan Leeming as an at-large member of the Board of Zoning Appeals for a term to expire June 30th of 2023. And lastly, the confirmation of reappointment for Kurt Berryman as an at-large member of the Board of Zoning Appeals for a term to expire June 30th of 2023. We had each of the candidates into committee of the whole, we had an opportunity to hear from them, particularly regarding their, you know, the expertise, educational backgrounds and things that uniquely qualify them for those positions. We did open it up for council questions, all questions were answered satisfactorily and we ended up approving all seven out of committee of the whole for consideration tonight. So with that being said, I would move the consent agenda.
All right, the consent agenda has been moved, is there anyone wishing to pull an item from the consent agenda? All right, as presented, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
A A zero N A's, the items on the consent agenda are adopted and we are to resolutions for action by President Spatafor.
Yes, so, Mr. Vice President, I'm gonna toss you the virtual gavel here, if I may now address the item before us. We have a resolution that will extend the date of the declaration of emergency through August 25th, 2020, and looking at my calendar, I think we picked that day because we have a city council meeting on the 24th, should we have to extend it further. As with all these extensions, it's under, it's the mayor's discretion as to whether they are terminated early, but he cannot extend them without our permission, he can declare a new one and that's a whole thing, but if we can extend it and then the only thing that he has to do is withdraw it if necessary, continues to be necessary as we incur expenditures related to COVID-19 and we love to get reimbursement specifically under state and federal reimbursement processes. So this is exactly the same resolution we've been passing every so often, it just kicks out that date to the 25th of August. If you would have asked me in March if we'd be doing this in August, I would have told you, heck no, but here we are. So, Mr. Vice President, thank you.
I'm assuming you moved that?
I do move the resolution, yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you. There is a resolution on the floor for the discussion. Councilwoman Wood.
Thank you, Vice President Hussein. I think this question is more so for the administration. Mr. Mayor, can you tell us how the different departments are now being staffed and used with the COVID, especially when we're looking at extending this? I know that the work share is up the end of this week. Could you enlighten us on, on where we are with, with that at this point?
Mayor Shaw, you have the floor.
Well, the work share is ended and I believe the 26th was the final day, the work share has ended, Friday was the last work share day that employees The work share has ended. Friday was the last work share day that employees had. So as of this week, we are back to five-day work weeks. The voluntary furlough ends at the end of the month. And then we are back to full staff. I am evaluating the hiring freeze to see if it makes sense to, to end that, at least for now, until we start getting some budget numbers. Because, you know, we have some positions that need to be filled, that I would like to see filled. And instead of just giving exemptions, we may, I may end that with a new executive directive. I'm going to look at that this week. I look at the budget numbers. Doesn't mean we may not have to reinstitute that and look at, you know, other options. We have no idea what the federal government's going to do, if they're going to extend further federal unemployment benefits. There's been talk of extending the $600. There's been talk of federal aid. U.S. House passed significant federal aid for locals. The U.S. Senate proposed a plan today that had $0 for locals. The White House has talked about just extending the $600 a week. It seems both parties have rejected that. So in terms of the federal aid, which was a big portion of what led to our four-day work weekend work share, there is no help from the feds right now. So we're waiting to see. Again, we've applied for two major grants from the state for, for CARES Act funding. I believe, believe about $9 million for locals, for our, our budget reimbursement from CARES Act funding. And then $1,000 for, for first, for first responder as allowed under law for hazard pay. And we'll get the revenue sharing payment, which will be COVID-related. So we're going to continue to navigate the, the budget and our staffing and, and, but we'll be back to full strength this week. Well, back to full strength with the work share, with the volunteer furloughs are still at the end of the month.
So are all departments now open to the public on a, on a walk-in basis, or are there still appointments? Are we requiring masks in City Hall as a public building? How are we handling those things?
The city buildings are still closed. We have not announced reopening. We're looking at it month to month. So I'm waiting for the governor's office to tell us the numbers are going down. We're still in, in stage, in stage three. We had anticipated reopening July 6th, but that was when the governor was anticipating putting us into phase five, and that did not happen. And thankfully, we didn't go backwards, but we are still closed to the public. So for those, for the clerk and for Treasury and for others, there are appointments available, but we are closed to the public. And we will stay closed at least through the month of August. We'll reevaluate at the end of August and after Labor Day. But I'll say it doesn't, it doesn't look good to see us open in August or September. Those who are in City Hall and those who are working or in any of the buildings under the governor's executive order, they have to be masked, and we have specific protocols that we have sent out to each department. They know what the protocols are. If you're in any public space, you're at your workstation, you don't have to wear a mask. If you are in any area with any other employees, you have to have a mask. So, you know, I walk around with a mask when I'm in City Hall all day, except for when I'm sitting at my desk. And so does everyone in my office, and, and we expect that from everybody in all departments. Anybody who comes into City Hall gets a temperature check, and we have an app where you're supposed to log it. And so we've got a centralized system. Nick Tate has a very in-depth memo on all of this that he has provided to every department, I assume, including city council and cherry. So we are, we have very strict procedures for those who are in office. We have many people who are working remotely where possible. But, yeah, we are, we have very strict procedures following the governor's executive order, the Health Department requirements, and all, all CDC basically recommended regulations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Vice President Hussein.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wood. Councilwoman Spitzley. I see your hand up. Did you have a question or a comment?
No, I don't know why my hand is up.
All right, further discussion, seeing none. Clerk Swol, can you administer the vote, please?
Okay, on adoption of the resolution to extend the state of emergency, Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein. Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
A A zero nays, the resolution is adopted, and we are to resolutions by the Committee on Ways and Means.
Councilmember, thank you, Mr. Vice President. I like not, yeah, having to run the whole thing. I might do that more often. So Councilmember Wood, if you would please take up these items.
Thank you, President Spatafor. First resolution that we have before us is a grant application and acceptance. This is for the Department of Neighborhood and Citizen Engagement. The grant is the results for America, What Works Cities. This is a grant for $25,500. It is a one-time grant. There are no matching funds. This grant will be used in the school, starting the school year of, in 2020, to work with high school seniors as well as our promise students that are at, let's see, our scholars that are at MSU LCC. And what this grant does is it helps them understand financial. It gives them financial capacity, helps them with financial counseling. It offers up to $125 per student in advanced achievement-based initiatives. And it helps them open a banking account, increase the savings, and learning about maintaining positive credit scores. And with that, I would move this resolution. Be glad to answer any questions. I cannot hear anybody else, so.
You're, you're on mute.
Sorry, the, my microphone has a mute button. I sometimes forget to unmute. So we are, have a motion before us approving the resolution. Is there any questions for Councilmember Wood? Seeing none, if the clerk would please call the roll.
Councilmember Betts.
Sorry, yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
The A A zero nays, the resolution is adopted, and we are to the grant for cities for financial.
Thank you. The next grant that we are looking at again is through the Department of Neighborhood and Citizen Engagement. It is Cities for Financial Empowerment. This is a contract that we have with Crystal Ray Community Center. The grant is for $80,000. This will cover a one additional FTE that will, is going to respond to the increasing financial burdens upon Lansing residents due to COVID-19. Currently, they have two FTA, FTE positions. Crystal Ray has been working with people one-on-one basis. They've also, as part of their counseling, they've also done counseling through Zoom as well as telephones. And this will pay for the counselors' salary, fringe benefits, and any equipment and supplies and expenses related to this. There are reports that are required as part of this contract that will be supplied to the city to measure the effectiveness of this grant. So with that, I would move the, this grant application and acceptance.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. The motion has been moved. I see a question or a comment from Councilmember Spitzley.
I just have a question. It's so the, the dollars to hire the FTE go to Crystal Ray. Crystal Ray is hiring the FTE, or the city of Lansing is?
No, correct. We enter into a contract with Crystal Ray to provide services. This grant is increasing that contract with them, and their plans for the grant is to hire an additional FTE person. You're welcome.
One thing I thought was, Councilmember Wood, what I thought was interesting in the presentation from the city administration on that was that they're increasingly using virtual to expand their reach and ability to communicate with people who might not have transportation options. So they're really leaning in on that, and the federal government has, has opened up that ability for them. So it's been really good opportunity to hit more residents with services that are desperately needed right now. Thank you. All right, seeing no other questions or comments, I'm going to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Okay, on adoption, on adoption of the resolution, Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
A A zero nays, the resolution adopted. So we are to the justice grant from the Office of Justice Programs.
Councilwoman Wood.
Thank you, President Spatafor. The next grant that we have, this would be, department would be the Police Department. This grant is coming through the U.S. Department of Justice. This is a COVID emergency supplement funding and can only be used for that. This is $339,769. There is no match from the city. There will be $249,830 that will be used toward goods and services and $89,939 toward personnel. The things that the, the grant will purchase is seven temperature screening devices, one decontamination supply vehicle, numerous other COVID prevention and exposure supplies, protective suits, air filtration system. There will also be ultraviolet lights that they will be using. They are also hiring a one cadet that is part of our cadet program that will work for 18 months on collecting data and, and working on this. A question was asked, since we're using money for personnel, does that mean that them, these are dollars that we're going to have to find in future budgets? But as the chief explained, this cadet more than likely will move on in the program into school. And so that position will just go away. It won't be one that they'll be funding again. And again, this is a one-time grant, and it's all related to the COVID-19 response. So with that, I would move the grant acceptance, grant application acceptance, and be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Wood, are there questions from council members? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll, approving the grant acceptance?
Okay, on the grant acceptance, Councilmember Betts.
No.
Councilmember Dunbar.
No.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Was that a yes?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes. Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Six A's, two Nays, the resolution is adopted.
Thank you very much.
And that takes us to the Committee of the Whole for the technically late item, replacing the other the agenda for the setting the hearing of the disposition of city.
Councilmember Hussein.
Sure. So very quickly, earlier this year, city council did amend Chapter 216 to permit the Lansing Housing Commission to own properties in its own name, among other amendments to update and essentially bring the ordinance in alignment with current practices. We had a pretty robust discussion during committee of the whole. What we are looking to do today is to actually set a public hearing. And that public hearing will be for August 31st, 7:00 PM, to consider a resolution to transfer the city's interest in properties it owns for use by the Lansing Housing Commission, or that the Lansing Housing Commission owns in its name on behalf of the city of Lansing, to the Lansing Housing Commission directly by quitclaim deed. This would include four multifamily properties. I believe they refer to them as amps, including Hildebrandt, Leroy Froome, Mount Vernon Park, as well as South Washington Park, as well as more than 200 single-family and two-family homes. Regarding these transfers, the Lansing Housing Commission will pay $1 to the city of Lansing. In addition, this would be, sorry, $1 per property. In addition, the city and Lansing Housing Commission have prepared a memorandum of understanding regarding obligations related to the Lansing Housing Commission properties, including indemnity for the city against all claims related to Lansing Housing Commission properties, as well as continued pilot agreements for the multifamily complexes. Mr. Gregory Venkure for the city attorney's office to tell us in committee of the whole that the memorandum of understanding is completed, and it will be filed with the city clerk as early as tomorrow. By approving the resolution, city council would be approving the transfer of Lansing Housing Commission properties again for $1 per property. And again, the public hearing would be August 31st, 1:00 PM, I'm sorry, 7:00 PM. It is tentatively set to be held on the 10th floor of City Hall with the understanding that we may have to host it via Zoom, depending on where we're, we're at with the governor's executive orders. So with that being said, I would move the resolution to set the public hearing.
Thank you. And I will just point out, in committee, in committee of the whole, I mentioned that it was my intention to do the public hearing on the 31st and vote on the ordinance change that same evening. Our city attorney has informed me that there is a requirement of at least a week delay between the two. So the earliest we could do that is seven days after that, which I don't know what the date is. But we, I don't know if we have a council meeting scheduled for that week. I'm stalling while I pull up the calendar. So August 31st, that'll be the 7th of September, which is Labor Day. And we do not have a council meeting on Labor Day, nor will we have a council meeting on Labor Day. So we'll have to push that probably through to the 14th. And if there is a demonstrated need for a special meeting, we can certainly do that. But as of now, we can't do it on the 31st. So I will call on Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. So this, you know, was on the radar with the city for a while, and I guess it's been in the process, you know. But really, you know, there's 200 and something scattered properties. I like to think that Lansing Housing Commission is really like for Lansing. And I think there's a lot of ideas that we could do with one, two, three, five, 10 of these properties that are right now owned by Lansing and the Lansing Housing Commission. I understand that, you know, there's a lot of legal stuff, but I feel like between us, administration, and the citizens, if we really want to do something with one of those properties, we can. I use the example in committee of the whole, Mikey McKissick Foundation. We know the work that he does. We know that he, he, he helps train young people that's generally at risk to a trade, to learn something that makes them sustainable, productive, hopefully for the rest of their lives. And, you know, we need that right now. So there's a public hearing that is supposed to be just procedural, that was decided by the attorneys. It's a good idea to have a public hearing to see if anybody has anything to say. So I challenge anybody with ideas. This is like a month away, August 31st. If there's any ideas from one of those houses, you know, let's put them in the works, because I know some of the demands and some of the shortages are in relation to housing. So let's make something happen.
Okay, Councilmember Wood.
Thank you. A couple of points. First of all, when we were going through the ordinance change, I think one of the things that we, was explained to council was there was the potential for people that are living in the single-family dwellings to have an opportunity possibly to purchase those. I would like to make sure. possibly to purchase those. I would like to make sure during the public hearing process that we get clarification on that. Some of what Mr. Fleming had said during the Committee of the Whole did not make that as clear as what I thought had been explained during the ordinance change. Second of all, in commenting on Councilmember Jackson's statements, it's my understanding that these are properties that were purchased with HUD dollars, and I'm not as sure that they can be turned over as he would hope at this point. I would encourage, again, we have properties that come back to us that are some of the ones that the McKissick family works on with these young people that are red-tagged properties when we go through the transfer from the treasurer's office on tax-reverted properties. And I think those are ones that the city has an opportunity to decide that will keep. And then, you know, then it's our responsibility to see what we do with them. Those might be some opportunities to work with some other nonprofits that might be interested in taking on that responsibility. But if we could check on, again, the ownership situation and the ability for these families to possibly purchase the homes that they're in, because it's my understanding 99% of these are up to code and people are living in them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. Seeing no further comments from council members, I will ask the clerk to call the roll on the resolution setting the public hearing.
On the resolution to set the public hearing, Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yeah.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yeah.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
AAs, zero NAs, the resolution is adopted. That takes us to the council rules, which was moved at the previous council meeting. So it is on the order of immediate passage.
All right. So we do not need a motion. Is that correct? We just need to call the order, call the roll. Okay. So we do have a motion before us. As you recall, this would amend Rule 16 to create the Standing Committee on Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion. This is in response to the resolution that the council passed creating this committee and declaring racism a public health crisis. Any questions or comments before we move on? Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you. It was quicker than trying to find the raise hand thing. I'm sorry. I just wanted to just comment really briefly in response to Councilmember Jackson. I am hoping that the purpose of the committee is not just on police defunding. So, you know, we're looking at a variety of things. Of course, the first resolution that has been referred to the committee is Councilman Betts' resolution. But the committee is going to be looking at, you know, much more things, more issues, more departments than just the Police Department.
Thank you, Councilmember Spitzley. Seeing no other comments, I'm going to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
On the rule change, Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. That's me, yes. Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
AAs, zero NAs, the resolution is adopted. And that takes us to...
Ordinances for pass.
Ordinances for passage by the Committee of the Whole. We have an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, re-adopting the codified ordinances of the City of Lansing. The ordinances read a second time by its title. It was reported from the Committee of the Whole and is on the order of meeting.
Thank you. Vice President Hussein.
Sure. So very quickly, we had a public hearing, I believe it was two weeks ago, so July 13th. It's been well discussed that our city charter does require that we re-adopt our ordinances every 10 years. Fortunately, in 2017, an oversight led to us failing to do that. After an emergency resolution adopting, we started to take a look at best practice moving forward, and we decided at that time that we needed to review and re-adopt on an annual basis. So again, we discussed this at length. We did have the public hearing. There was no comment that demonstrated any concern with this. So with that being said, I would move the readoption of the codified ordinances of the City of Lansing.
Thank you. The motion before us. Any further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
AAs, zero NAs, the ordinance is adopted, which takes us to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. We'll get up to three minutes to speak on any issue related to the governance or operation of the city. So please go ahead and start virtually raising your hands. We will close the sign-up lists after the first speaker finishes their speech. So please go ahead and get your hands up now. And in the meantime, we are to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Vice President.
Sure. I would move that all items be considered as being read in full and that the proper referrals be made by you, President Spatafor.
There's a proper motion. Any discussion on that? Other than saying, some will note, as the mayor pointed out, there are on here a few letters noting that we have applied for grants. This is in response, and appreciate that, Mayor Shore, that we'd had some discussions about some grants coming through that we weren't really aware of. So we get them and they're placed on file. So if you're interested in that topic, please make sure you review those letters as they come through on our agendas. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
AAs, zero NAs, the motion is... So we have letters from the city clerk regarding minutes of boards and commissions.
Placed on file.
Letters from the mayor regarding special assessment for Glenburn Commons Trash and Grass Abatement.
The Committee on Public Service.
Appointment of Holly McDermott to the Board of Police Commissioners.
The Committee on Public Safety.
The Establishment of Social Districts.
Not a thing.
Not a thing, not being...
That didn't come to us yet, has it?
This is the referral.
Oh, I'm sorry. Put it back to Committee of the Whole.
Okay. Act 2, 2020, southwest corner of Grand River, sanitary sewer easements.
Committee on Development and Planning.
Act 1 of 2020, Jerome Street and Home Street Right-of-Way Vacation.
Committee on Development and Planning.
Grant application, first responder hazard pay premium.
Placed on file.
And grant application, public safety and public health payroll reimbursement program.
Placed on file.
Appointment, Steve Jettinga as a member of the South Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard Corridor Improvement Authority.
Committee on Development and Planning.
The appointment of Annie Bukar to the same authority board.
Development and Planning.
Alexis Carnegie Dunham to the same board.
Development and Planning.
Don Sober to the same board.
Development and Planning.
Jeffrey Johnson to the same board.
Development and Planning.
Michael Story to the same board.
Development and Planning.
Nikki Solden, same board.
Mayor's office has been busy. Development and Planning.
Okay, communications petition, a notice from the Liquor Control Commission, a request to transfer ownership with Sunday sales permit from Rabnitz at 4013 Aurelius Road.
The Committee on General Services.
And we are to remarks by council members.
Do we have council members with comments? Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. So I just wanted to explain my vote for the grant acceptance for the LPD for the COVID-19 relief, $3,000-plus dollars. I am definitely aware of the movements and the people's concerns, and I'm definitely sensitive to all of that. But in this case, the reality is, is that right now, the police still make a lot of police contact with people. And they are, there is COVID-19 out there. And from my understanding, the grant is for use to kind of offset those challenges. It is a safety and health factor as well. So that's why I support it. And I just want to continue the conversation and encourage, you know, people to continue to reach out to me because I'm very open-minded on this topic and am following very closely both sides on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Other council members wishing to make comments? Seeing no others, let's move on. Mr. Clerk.
Okay, then we are to, oh, the mayor's remarks.
Mr. Mayor, anything to round out the meeting?
I want to thank Councilman Hussein. You listed off a whole variety of South MLK, CIA Corridor Improvement Authority members, which we're really excited to get that going. But Councilman Adam Hussein had a huge role in recruiting people for that board, and I would like to publicly thank him for that. It's going to be exciting and great for Southwest Lansing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Hussein, for your involvement.
All right. Then we are to public comment. And the first speaker is John Cifredo. You have three minutes.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the time today. I wanted to just take this opportunity to vocalize my support for Councilmember Betts and Dunbar's resolution on defunding the police. I think that is the right call. I saw in the city polls here that we have a publication from a local police officer, John Cosme, if I'm saying that right, I hope, arguing his side for why we shouldn't defend it. And I just found it to be a very flawed and incorrect way of thinking. I support defunding the police because what we are proposing, as what I understand, is to debundle. Let's take some of these responsibilities away from the police and find people who are better suited to do it. The police in our city have many responsibilities, and we need to reassess if all of those responsibilities are best handled by them. And I think it's obvious that they aren't. Listening on this meeting alone, we're talking about, and I appreciate Councilmember Jackson explaining why he voted yes for that, was it $300,000-odd grant? And I can certainly understand that. But my question to that is, maybe we should have people who are better suited for COVID response than the police. Maybe we need to invest in mental health problems and community things that get to the root of these problems so that we don't need more police. We still need police for a specific function, but right now, they have too many responsibilities, many of which I don't think they are properly suited for. And they keep arguing more training. We need more training. But instead of trying to take a force of, or a task force that has a specific function and elevate them up, let's take in professionals who are actually trained on this, rather than trying to take a police force and teach them how to be doctors. Let's get doctors in here to teach and take care of doctor-related and health concerns. We're going to have a big problem with COVID come winter, and we, it would be better if we had that money to help our homeless and to fund doctors and people who can properly respond to this, rather than just giving police more tools that they might not be using most efficiently. So I fully support the plan to defund. I think it's the right call. And I'm very bothered by the city polls article. I hope that the council members here aren't thinking that this is what we, the citizen, wants, or that it accurately reflects what we think. I was very disturbed by it, and I fully support the resolution of Betts and Dunbar. Thank you.
Thank you. So if you have not signed up, we are closing. So we are now to Cynthia Ward.
Good evening, council. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. With the lifting of the moratorium on evictions, I wanted to make sure city council and our citizens were aware that housing assistance is available for those who are facing evictions. The district court has placed information about free resources on its website for people who may need assistance. There is also information about what tenants can expect at the landlord-tenant pre-trial hearing, which will be conducted over Zoom. Housing resources, housing assistance resources are free, and people do not need a judgment to access these services. The sums and complaint they would have received are sufficient. Ingham County residents should call Holy Cross Services at 517-657-8145. And Lansing residents living in Eaton County can call Housing Services of Michigan at 517-541-1180. Again, these services are free, and this information and other information can be found on a district court's website. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next speaker is Loretta Stanaway.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I would like to say that I understand the public is behind making many changes to services that have been underfunded and understaffed for a very long time. I don't disagree with any of that. I think that our fire department and our police department are far above average, and that our police department in particular does not exhibit or experience a lot of the issues which are being played out nationally as problems. It is not perfect. It can use some revision, and there's always room for improvement. I do think that there's a possibility of using something like reserve officers to take on some of the roles that the police are currently using. A reserve officer is a volunteer who is not paid and provides their own supplies and equipments. They're trained. They're MyCole certified. And I think that continuing to talk about defunding the police needs to be looked at very closely because, as it's largely interpreted, it would put our community at great risk. We are understaffed now as far as police officers are concerned, and they are not able to get a good handle on the crime that they should and the traffic issues that they should. Some of the changes that police are being asked to make could rectify or change some of those circumstances. But I think we have to be careful, too. I mean, it would be equally ludicrous to say, well, you know, the schools are not being used. We're doing online training and educating the students now. So we have all this vacant property sitting there doing nothing, and all these millage dollars that we have approved to spend aren't getting spent because the buildings are vacant and not occupied. So why don't we take all those dollars and turn those dollars over to serving the needs of the community these people are expressing they want to serve? That would be just as ludicrous as the proposal to take the money from the police. Yes, we need to improve services, but no, we don't fund them off of the back of the lease, and no, we don't fund them off the back of the schools. If we truly value these changes and want them made, we fund them properly through millages, through taxes, through check-offs on our income tax returns and methods that are a direct use of the funds rather than the subversion of existing funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Emily, who has not given us last name, and she will be followed by the person that has identified themselves as resigned shore. Emily, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Emily Walkowski. I'm on the south side. I am here once again to voice support for the resolution that was introduced two weeks ago by Councilmember Betts and Councilmember Dunbar. It's pretty obvious at this point that it's... Dunbar. It's pretty obvious at this point that it's what the city wants. Councilmember Spatafor, Councilmember Spitzley, and Councilmember Dunbar, I know you guys are all on the committee to get this passed. I encourage you to approve the resolution in its current form. It's, like I said, it's pretty much exactly what the people of the city want. I want to be clear that volunteer cops are absolutely not what the city needs, as Loretta Stanaway keeps, like, demanding. Volunteer cops are a terrible idea, and I just, I want to voice so much support in favor of getting rid of the police and not adding on unpaid volunteer, untrained, don't-know-what-they're-doing cops. Once again, obviously, here to speak in approval of defunding the police, as well as abolishing the police force in the state that it's in right now and creating an entirely new force, which is not based on oppression, that wasn't built on the back of oppression, and isn't racist to its core. We obviously have, like, drastic changes to make, and that's what the people want. Obviously, I'm gonna address Andy Shore and tell him that he needs to resign. I don't think anybody's told him that yet today, and that kind of makes me sad. Andy, you gotta go, bud. Like, no, there's so much support for you to leave. You're not what the city wants. You are blatantly racist. You are obviously inept. You are not qualified to, to hold public office in any capacity. So please, just resign. I don't know. I guess that's it for today.
Thank you. Next, we have someone identified as resigned Shore, followed by Erica Spitz Saden.
Hello. This is actually Michael Lynn. I'm sorry. I forgot to paint that, though. Couple of things. I've seen that they're talking about the housing and selling the annexed houses that are away from the tall stacks that they've been housed in prior. There's something going on with this, and I just want to say that we will figure it out. If there's any corruption going on or conflict of interest with Doug Fleming, we will find it and hold who is responsible responsible. I think that Doug Fleming was placed in that position by Andy Shore, which I automatically can't be trusted. But his conflict of interests of working with other organizations that would buy these houses, possibly, seems to be a conflict of interest to me, and if it's there, we'll find it. The City Pulse wrote a couple of articles on this. If anybody cares to look and read up on those, they're very skeptical of this situation as well. But also on top of that fact is the fact that, are the neighborhoods that they're living in, is this not important for us to keep people that can't afford housing, the availability to live inside of a home in a neighborhood that's regular and not some housing tenement that's been put up and put in that position? So I just, I think that I beg that you guys look at that more deeply and how that would impact these people's lives who've been living in these places up to this point, especially during the time that we're in now, where a lot of people are going to be receiving eviction notices and so on, and finding a place to live will be very difficult. Secondly, the Diversity Committee Task Force Hideaway Watchdog that Andy put together, I'm really the one that had the call the other day. That thing was a fiasco. I sat on it for an hour trying to get through. They wouldn't let me speak. I made phone calls to people who called in to finally allow me to get on after you asked the questions that were so clearly directed at a response from Mike Lynn, given that I dealt with racism at my workplace. And I went and talked to my HR department, and that was actually one of you guys' questions, but you didn't want to hear a real answer to that, did you, Andy? So you didn't let them call on me, which was very, very oppressive, I felt like. Outside of that, I want to know how you manned that committee. Who'd you talk to? How'd you pick the people? Are they all Lansing residents? Did they apply for it? Was everybody given that opportunity? I didn't see anybody on there who's been through the oppression, who knows what this city is talking about or needs to have a voice on that. So I want to know where you got that committee from. And looking at defunding the police for that committee is a waste of damn time. We know we need to defund the police. We also need to turn around and look at the guy who appointed them, because if they want to find racism within Lansing, they can look right at that mayor sitting right there with the blue shirt on, with the plaid blanket behind him. That's where the racism is.
Thank you. The next speaker is Erica Spitz Saden, followed, she'll be followed by Sam Inglot.
Hi, this is Erica Spitz Saden. I have lived in and around Lansing. Hi, is the clock doesn't be moving? Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay. This is Erica Spitz Saden. I've lived in and around Lansing since 1978. I will be a Lansing resident again, beginning next week. First off, I think that the City Council has already taken a good look at this, and yes, I think some eyes have started to open, and I think we're starting to move in the right direction. But I don't want to see us lose our momentum. You know, folks are talking about defunding the police as though we're taking money away from the police department. These are taxpayer dollars. We are talking about directing them at places we want them to go. And yes, I am currently a taxpayer myself. You know, the Lansing Police Department has been reported to have twice as high a rate of interactions with people of color, and yet they are not twice the population of the City of Lansing. Within the fire department, you were actually just speaking with someone who has been dealing with racism within that department. There have been allegations of racism within the mayor's office. I think that we really just need to start over. People need to step down and move on so that we can begin again. You know, volunteer police are still police. They're not the answer. When we look at defunding the police, people think that we're taking away to give to the other. It's like that classic trolley problem where, you know, you can let the trolley keep going and doing its thing, and it's going to run over the people it's going to run over, or you can make a choice and flip the switch, and it runs over a specific person, but you're saving more lives. And you know what? It's actually not like that. Defunding the police is like turning off the electricity to the trolley car. You're stopping it. No one gets hurt. That's what we're asking for when we talk about defunding. Taking the money away from a department that's actually not using it correctly. They're overpolicing. There is racism within the department and putting it to services that benefit the communities themselves. You know, there are housing opportunities that this money could go to, maybe if not specifically the houses that we were talking about earlier, but there are certainly things that can be done within the community. This money could be used towards shelters, housing, education. There are plenty of places that this funding could go and be a larger part of the community, instead of something that's used against the community. Our own police department used tear gas on citizens that were protesting police brutality. Our police chief, it actually took him a couple of weeks to recognize that, oh, wow, that's really what happened. There were things that he didn't know that was going on. So I really think a lot of folks need to step down, move on, so that other people can come in with good ideas. The ideas are already being presented to the council. We just need to act on it. Thank you.
And thank you. The next speaker is Sam Inglot, followed by Emily Rice.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Sam Inglot. I've been a Lansing resident for eight years now. And I'd like to encourage everyone to take a trip on over to Google and Google the words "Bill Shute" and "emails." And what you'll see is that the Michigan Supreme Court today made a pretty big decision that will go a long way in establishing transparency in state government. As you know, as maybe some of you know, Michigan has some of the worst ethics and transparency rankings in the entire country. So, again, that's a big win for transparency. That's a big win for the people of Michigan. And that brings me to my reiteration for a call for transparency in Lansing city's government. We're working on that at the state level. There's no reason we can't do it here, too. And I would just like to reiterate my call for Mayor Shore and the city to open up public access to complaints and disciplinary records against police. There are ways that you can selectively redact that information to protect certain individuals' privacy and employment law. And the key to transparency really is trust. Transparency helps build trust. And what we're talking about right now is a time when people have lost trust in the public services and institutions that are supposed to provide for them. That's why I support the Black Lives Matter movement, the demands of Black Lives Matter Lansing, and I want to echo the support of my fellow residents of Lansing who have so eloquently restated those demands, as well as spoken out on the issue of racial justice. I also want to say that there is a, the resolution that Councilmembers Betts and Dunbar put together should be supported by everyone on the committee that sits before, as well as the council members who do not. Now is the time for historic change. Now is the time for us to really craft a new vision for how our communities operate and change from a culture of fear and mistrust to one of trusting and community. And that's what we have an opportunity to do right now. It may seem difficult, but I believe that a pathway has been laid out by black community leaders, as well as some members of this council. So I just urge you to support the resolution, support the movement for Black Lives and the demands of Black Lives Matter Lansing, and again, open up police complaint records and disciplinary actions to the public record so we can have transparency and trust and truly accountable government and public services. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Emily Rice, followed by Jessica Yorko.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Emily Rice, again, from the Fourth Ward. I just want to reiterate my support for the resolution introduced by Councilmembers Betts and Dunbar. I just want to reiterate that this is not a radical proposal by any means, but it is a necessary step. And I do want to emphasize again that by declaring or declaring racism a public health crisis must mean that we invest dollars into programs that affect social determinants of health heavily and heavily divest an historically racist institution. Now is the moment to lead and to build a better tomorrow, and we can do that because we can imagine a better future. And if we can imagine it, then, then we can build it. And we also must continue to listen to the Black Leaders and Black Lives Matter. This is, this is the moment. We must listen to them. So I'll keep it short. I'm asking members of the DEI Committee and all members of the council to support this resolution. Thank you. Have a great night, and I yield my time.
Thank you. Next, we have Jessica Yorko, followed by Rachel Sweet. Jessica, go ahead.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thanks for the time. I just want to make a couple of brief comments. I mainly want to speak in support of the resolution introduced by Councilmembers Betts and Dunbar. I had the opportunity to participate as a volunteer facilitator in the First Lansing People's Assembly convening a couple of weekends ago, and there were over 2,000 people who signed up to participate. So we are taking those in segments. There were about 200 people who participated in that process the first time around. And I will say that having a community dialogue that is facilitated by community residents who are not working for the administration, are not working for the city council, I think it's a true process that allows the community voice to be heard, and I appreciate that that component was included in the resolution. I also want to give a couple of statistics that folks in the public and on the council may or may not have heard before. This is in relation to the carceral state, and by that I mean not only policing, but jails, courts, and everything associated. There are more African-American adults who are under correctional control today than were enslaved in 1850, a decade before the Civil War. And I want you to let that sink in. Ingham County, the local pretrial jail incarceration rates for African-Americans are nearly three times higher than for any other race group. And I will send these statistics to you via email with the sources cited. I would also like to mention that none of Michigan's 29 prisons have air conditioning, which many people should be concerned about. And also, when you look at employment rates in Lansing, East Lansing, by race and age, for males aged 16 through 19 who are black, 15% are employed, as compared to 44% of white men who are employed in that age group. And in the 20 to 24 age group, 35% of black males are employed, as compared to 62% of white males. And you may be wondering why that is. Is it that black men aren't seeking jobs? And I highly doubt that that is the reason. I will also send you statistics on another study called "Racial Impact of Criminal Record in Interview Callbacks." Black men with a criminal record only receive 5% callbacks for interviews, whereas white men with a criminal record are 17% receive callbacks. And when there's no criminal record, black men receive callbacks at a rate of 14%, as opposed to white men, 34%. Which, if you didn't catch that, white men with a criminal record are more likely to get a callback for a job interview than black men with no criminal record. These are some of the things that, when we talk about reforming police, we really are talking about reforming our entire society. We don't give people employment opportunities. We have racial narratives that distort people's views of people's employment abilities, educational abilities, and many other factors. And I applaud the council for addressing these concerns and for the resolution that's introduced. And I also want to say that it is, it is one piece of the puzzle. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Rachel Sweet, followed by Tobias Webb.
Hello there. This is Rachel Sweet from News 10. I just wanted to clarify something. When you guys mentioned the Lansing Social District Plan, you said that this was the committee of the whole. Can you clarify that for me? Are you guys going to be discussing it tonight at all?
No.
No? Is it, was it just introduced?
Yes.
Okay, then what's the next step?
A comment you should call one of us after the meeting. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, we have Tobias Webb, followed by Ethan Schmidt.
Hi, thank you. If you want, yeah, reset that clock. Yeah, I'm Tobias Webb. I'm one of the people regularly out protesting the absurd budget that the Lansing police feel entitled to. I want to reiterate, reiterate what Mike Lynn said. Any appointment by Andy Shore is really not to be trusted. You got to look at the view of a white supremacist has been elected, and you guys are kind of a bulwark, bulwark to stop white supremacist actions from taking place. And so you got to do what you can to do that. Need to reiterate what many people have said today. Sure, you got to resign. Reiterate what almost everyone has said today. The Betts and Dunbar proposal is a winner, but it's also the bare minimum. You know, it's what we can get, like, all of the people of Lansing to agree on, because it's not super radical. So if anybody here doesn't, doesn't support that, you know, that's absurd. Like, how could you, how could you call yourself even remotely progressive or even a Democrat and act that way? Like, you guys rely on these votes from the people of Lansing, so it'd be pretty dumb. Loretta Stanaway, unpaid folk, aren't, aren't the solution. You know, empowering actual Lansing community members, like people said, in the capacity where we need them. When, when we need doctors, we need some Lansing doctors, not some police to get more trained, or some random unpaid folk that want to volunteer to, you know, do a job that is about brutalizing people for the most part. Other than that, I want to get back with last week, like a lot of the Lansing environmental people were talking about. Those appointments to the Board of Water and Light, definitely, definitely need to, you need to stop those appointments from, from Mayor Shore and look at some of the other people that have applied for those positions, that that have applied for those positions, that actually give a fuck about the environment and aren't trying to put in a, a new power system that's going to be obsolete in 10 or 15 more years.
Mr. Webb, I'm going to ask you to refrain from vulgarity. We have to, this is broadcast on public access, so please.
My apologies.
Please respond, PG.
Yeah, that's all I got. Resign, Shore.
Thank you. Next is Ethan Schmidt, followed by Chris Baffia. Go ahead, Ethan.
So thank you very much for allowing me to speak today. I just want to say here and reiterate, my name is Ethan Schmidt. I live on the east side. And I want to reiterate this, my support for Councilmember Betts and Dunbar's resolution that we've talked about today. I don't, I'm not going to regurgitate points that have been made today, but I do want to really stress how important it is that this is not a halfway measure, nor is this thought of as something that takes away safety. This is not an original point that I have thought of. Many people have made this before me in general, but the idea that we don't consider violence from the state against citizens to be a form of violence is to be suspect. And I think sometimes that we can be misled by statistics when part of the issue is that the police departments across the country have been caught manipulating the way that reports have been made, have been reported, have been completely caught lying in many cases. I think Minneapolis is a classic example. If we hadn't seen the tape, we never would have known what happened. And we continue to see this over time. So I think state action against citizens is something we have to consider when considering public safety. And the idea that we should be, that we defund the police department without adequately pushing toward other qualified professionals, to me is, doesn't make much sense either. If we were just to take away the funding without adequately considering what we should be putting instead, I think that's a mistake. But I think the idea that, you know, this, this has been brought up a few times, but the idea of volunteer leaders of police defeats the entire purpose of what we're talking about. What we're saying is we want the police department to be replaced in a lot of ways by people who are more qualified to do it, what they do, especially in the area of de-escalation, which I am sad to say the police department has not shown a very strong track record of both here and elsewhere. And I think it's very important for us to be able to understand that this push toward volunteers, this thought that we are reducing public safety or anything along these lines, it's, it's not the correct thought. The correct thought is how do we do this in the best way possible? And it's very obvious that this one-size-fits-all approach when it comes to police officers handling everything is not the way to go. So please make sure that when you're debating this and you're thinking about this, that you think about the whole picture. And when it comes to violence, that you think about the whole picture when it comes to who we're putting in their place. And that we really understand the situation on the ground and take historical context into account when we consider which statistics we're trusting from police departments. And I'm, I'm a big numbers guy. I really believe in statistics, but it's indisputable at this point that police officers have lied systematically to cover up their tracks. That should be taken into account. Thank you very much.
You. And next is Chris Baffia, followed by Nikki Finch. Sorry, go ahead, Chris.
Okay. Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. Okay, so I just wanted to be another voice in what is seemingly the large majority of citizens that are speaking on this. But yeah, just a couple of things. The very obvious one, we're majorly in agreement is Brandon Betts's proposal to really radically defund our, you know, our police. And, you know, it's just, it's just baffles me that, that the police budget can be upwards of $50 million. And it's not even a, not even decimal of a fraction of that money going back into the community, into the people who are being brutalized by the kinds of people that are being brutalized by the police. So I just, I think it's absurd. It's, it's about time we defund. It's also about time that Andy Shore resigns. I also wanted to support Michael Lynn and everything that he said. It's, you know, we've got to change every aspect of this racist system in order to reroute it. So, you know, people can be racist without being hateful or violent. But if you contribute to a racist system and benefit off of it, then, you know, you're still racist. So that's, that's about all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Nikki Finch, followed by Zach Whaley.
Hello. This is actually Leah Finch, and I live in the First Ward. Hello, everybody. Again, hi, Andy. I'm really disappointed to see you still here again this week. Nothing has changed. You still need to resign. I would also like to voice my support for the resolution introduced by Betts and Dunbar. And I would urge the rest of the council to come out with some public statements, either in support of this kind of idea or against it, so we know where you stand. It's a little absurd that, considering all of this public comment and everything that's happened, the rest of the council hasn't made their positions clear. This is something that clearly means a lot to many, many people in the community, and it's an issue that's not going to go away. So if you would like to be accountable to the people that you're representing, you need to speak on this issue. I would also like to request that the council look into the hiring practices of the Lansing Fire Department. Why are there no black women in the fire department? Why has it been decades since they've hired a black woman? I think there's a lot of information that the council can find in the media about this issue. And also why the fire department is hiring people outside the city of Lansing. There's no reason for that. We have plenty of qualified people here. We can train them. We can give them good jobs. They live here. They care about the community, and they should be given priority for those jobs. On the topic of defunding the police, it's easy to think that making a change like this is difficult. And it can seem radical because we've been living with this horrible situation for so long. But when we think about what's happened to our society over the decades, the divestment from education, from community programs, this is, this is defunding our communities. That's what we've been doing. And so what we're asking for isn't that we defund some essential, some essential service. It's that we correct the mistake of divesting from our communities and really putting resources where they're going to give us some kind of future. And I ask you each to think about, what is the future if we continue on this trend of taking money away from our communities, giving them to a small number of incredibly wealthy individuals and to the cops who are only there to protect them and to enforce white supremacy and the dominance of a few incredibly wealthy people? Where does that take us? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Zach Whaley, followed by Jonathan Yono. Zach?
There we go. All right, there we go. Thank you, quickswoop. I had a lot of thoughts today, and then some of the other people started sharing their thoughts, and then that triggered more thoughts. So I've got a stack of post-it notes I'm going to try to work through here. But first, I just wanted to say hi, Loretta. Thanks again for sharing your thoughts. I just want to let you know, so the version of the police that you idolize and probably call your neighbors on once a week has never existed. It's not a bad few apples. So just to kind of explain that, I'm going to go through a little history lesson here. I've been listening to a podcast recently called Behind the Bastards with a journalist named Robert Evans. He's doing a special with seven episodes about the history behind the police. And gosh darn, has it been enlightening. So in the lower, in the southern states, you had slave patrols. But in the northern states, basically had what were called constabularies. They were paid by private businesses. They were just private citizens to basically intimidate and beat up their competition. And then also to protect their goods and services. So whether they were in transit or in storage, basically they were paid thugs. And at some point, the businesses realized that if they could pitch us the right way to city councils as a public safety service, then they would have to stop paying for the constabularies. And so that's where we have the modern police. Boston was the first city to actually set up the first modern policing department like that. That's where Lansing's Police Department comes from. Police do not protect people. They protect property. They have since they were conceived. And to that end, I want to address, Councilmember Jackson is one of the constituents in the First and the Fourth Ward. My disappointment in you supporting the resolution to accept grants for their funding the police. I understand the idea behind wanting to prevent them from causing further harm to citizens by providing them with UV lights and masks and a cadet. But I gotta say, probably the best way to prevent them from harming people is just to have them stop interacting with people. Giving them safety equipment is kind of like giving Jack the River a pair of safety scissors and just hoping he stops murdering people. The way that you protect them is you just isolate them from society. The idea that the same person would respond to an argument between domestic partners, a minor traffic violation, and for bomb threats is insane. The fact that we aren't just relooking at that idea every single day and how ridiculous this is, is just a huge testament to the complacency in our society. It was such a broken system. This past week, I was part of the LGBTQ Black Lives Matter march. And you can go see the live videos of that and kind of get the full story. But long story short, the only person of five different car drivers who were part of that march who was a black woman with disabilities was the only person who was ever attempted to be arrested by LPD for blocking traffic. They did that after telling them that they were free to go, and then they sped around the corner to yank her out of her car violently. You can watch the video. You can see that. Resign, Shore. Defund the police. Abolish the police. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Jonathan Yono.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I can agree with fellow citizens on several points. We certainly need and want more transparency of our police and all of our institutions. That's not only fair to the citizens who elect you and those who appoint the chief and his staff, et cetera, but it's fair to them as well. On the point of defunding and moving funds from the police to other agent, possible agencies, certainly mental health professionals need more help. They need more resources. But every time a mental health professional goes into a room with a psychotic patient, they're always backed up by security. They can't do that kind of job alone. They can't do it on the streets. So just shifting that off the police entirely is not an option. Cops cannot be psychologists or psychiatrists. But if we do want more mental health professionals for the city, we should let the voters use millages for such funding instead of defunding the police. Other citizens might be able to hire private security. I cannot afford it. I don't believe my neighbors can. And I think defunding the police is going to hurt blacks and poor people before anybody else, before a lot of the speakers here. I'm worried about violent neighborhoods becoming more violent. And I don't think my neighborhood, in which I've had a couple of shootings in the past couple of years, I don't think it's going to get any better with less police. My neighbors and I appreciate when they come out to deal with stressful situations and situations that wouldn't be resolved peacefully otherwise. I want law and order. Lansing needs law and order. If you don't want law and order, you go to Mogadishu. But I don't think anybody here wants that. No citizens want that. I, I urge you to reject Council, Councilman Betts's proposals. And lastly, all the attacks on you, Mayor Shore. We're a democratic society, Mayor. People can vote you out if they want. You certainly don't need to resign. We have the ballot box to, to voice exactly who we want to lead our cities. So despite not having voted for you, I respect your position. I am appalled by the attacks on you, and I will probably vote against you. But I, I would hope that you, you stand true to your convictions and continue to lead in your capacity in the best way possible to your conscience. Thank you. Have a good evening all.
Thank you. And I believe the last person that raised their hand before the announced time we had given is Gareth G. So Gareth?
Good evening, councilmembers. How are you doing tonight? I just wanted to speak a little bit on behalf of the federal funding that was voted on today. It was for, I believe, close to $350,000 for the police to have COVID protection. I think that things like that being voted for about a little more transparency to what it will be used for this year and what will be used beyond is a nice thing to have. Basically, it feels like we're worried about the protection for our officers. But I believe that their funds should be able to cover what they would need to keep them protected in this case, as well as the fact that there is, there are other employees that are essential that could use things like this to be able to get them protection, like masks, specifically teachers, who are about to go back in a month, who could use some sort of federal funding like this but aren't getting it. But basically, what it comes down to is beyond the transparency of that, I believe that the police force can get these grants federally very easily. It's something that they can come by with, there's a lot of grants that basically can go to the police force. And that being said, I feel that the, basically proposals being made by Councilmen Betts and Dunbar are basically implying that we can defund the police, reassociate funds in our communities. And police can still fund themselves in ways through grants. And I believe that our police force doesn't need the money that they have to keep doing what they do. I believe that they can find grants to do what they do. And I believe that there are other communities and other, other places in our city that we need to start funding money for that would better use those funds that our taxes are paying for. Last quick thing also is that the BWL thing, I definitely think needs to be investigated. Just because I, it feels that they've taken advantage of people in the city for a long time between billing and not checking what they're billing people for and not doing proper measures and that. So I think there's a lot of, not even mentioning that, but just the, the river, Grand River is just completely polluted. Things need to be done about that. That's outrageous. People use that river and you really can't use that river here. And I think that things need to be done to help clean that up. So that's all I have to say. Thank you. Bye.
All right, that concludes public comment as the registration was closed after the first speaker. There are no absent council members, and at 8:49 PM, we are adjourned.